Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pray with me. Lord, thank you for the many blessings that you're giving us. Lord, thank you for this community that we live in and the school district that we serve. Please be with each and every board member here tonight. Give us wisdom, help us to always act in the best interest of the students and the staff. Please be with all those visitors, be with them when they travel home. It's in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Well, we will call this meeting to work in hopes that we do have a call in present with all board members in attendance and the agenda was posted in timely fashion. Next item is recognition of Students of the Month. If the board will come around here to sign the tape.
All right, tonight I would like to introduce our soaring Cardinals for the third six weeks. I'll start with pre-K. In Mrs. Pace's class, we have Hamley Cricks. Hamley is an amazing student. She is the true meaning of soaring cardinal. She comes to school every day ready to try her very best. She is very kind to others and she's always willing to help. She's worked super hard this year learning all of her objectives. She is such a dependable young lady. Hamley Cricks. Our next soaring cardinal from Mrs. Pace's class is Mr. Ty Kite. Mr. Ty is an amazing student. He is a true meaning of a soaring cardinal. He comes to school every day ready. He tries his very best. He's kind to others and is always willing to help. He has worked very hard this year, learning all of his letters and numbers, and he is truly a cardinal. Next, in kindergarten, Miss Flannery's class, Sage Singer. Sage is a kind-hearted student who works hard with his day-to-day work in the classroom and outside of the classroom. I've watched Sage be an example of kindness to others in our class and other students in the school. We are so very proud of him. Sage. Next, kindergarten, Mrs. Gordon's class, Elijah Green. Elijah is an awesome student. He is always kind to others and very respectful. He always has a good attitude. He is a true cardinal. In first grade, we have Nathan Meyer. Nathan works very hard and always tries his best on everything he is asked to do. He is a great friend and is willing to help others whenever they need it. He is a wonderful example of what a soaring cardinal should be. And next, for Miss Jones's class, first grade, Harper McNally. Harper is dependable, kind, and hard-working. She wants to always do her best no matter the task. I can always count on Harper. Second grade, Miss Epperson's class, Bradley Pittman. Bradley is a great student. He works hard to meet his goals. If you need a helper, Bradley is your guy. He helps me with whatever I might need as well as all his classmates. He's a flamazing second grader. Second grade, Mrs. Norris's class, Ella Jones. Ella is an awesome student. She always tries her best. She has an infectious smile and is so kind and helpful to her classmates. She's truly a joy to teach. Miss Ella. And now for my Staff Member of the Month. For the elementary is Miss Jaden Sanders. As our technology paraprofessional, Jaden embodies the true spirit of teamwork and positivity. She tackles every task with a smile on her face and a can-do attitude that brightens the day for everyone around her. Whether it's supporting staff or stepping in wherever she's needed, Jaden soars above and beyond with grace and enthusiasm. Her dedication and positivity make her an invaluable part of our cardinal family. Thank you, Jaden, for all you do. We're going to start off this night to highlight our middle school Students of the Month. And our middle school students this month, they were students that participated in UIL back in December. And these students participated in the most events out of students in their classes. So we have one boy and one girl represented from each grade. I will say two of our girls will be here shortly, but they are still playing basketball. And one of our boys, he is not going to be here tonight. We celebrated him a little bit earlier because he is actually in Paul Puitt playing basketball. So with that being said, I'll have the following students come up. Stetson Bachelor, Madeline Nunn, Dakota Green. And that's all we have here at this time. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to have each student introduce themselves, tell you the grades that they are in, and also tell you the activities that they participated in the events. And I want to highlight that these students participate in this event, they practice on top of extracurricular activities and their rigorous daily schedule. So I'm going to let them tell you what they did.
My name is Stetson Bachelor. I'm in sixth grade and I'm in math, math, social studies.
Hello, my name is Madeline Nunn. I'm in the sixth grade. I did oral reading, dictionary, science, and lessons.
My name is Dakota Green. I'm in the seventh grade. I did math, number sense, science, spelling, and chess.
So as you can see, these students took on a very, very large load and they did great for us at UIL in December and we're super proud of them. And that's why we are awarding them our Students of the Month. We have two organizations that did a lot, have done a lot throughout the year, and they did a lot for tonight to celebrate our board for Board Appreciation Month. Our first organization that I would like to highlight is Miss Belinda Brown and our floral design program. So students, Miss Brown, if you will, come on up. So I want to start off first by celebrating Miss Brown. When, it's not very often you get an opportunity to hire a retired florist to actually teach your floral design classes. And so when that opportunity presented itself to us this summer, Dr. Seegers and I, we jumped at this opportunity and it has been a blessing. As you can see there by Mr. Van Dever, we have beautiful flower arrangements all around campus. Our foyer there in the middle school is always decorated for the seasons. Our students will tell you about some of the things that they participated in and some of the activities that they've done throughout the year. But she has been such a blessing to, add addition to our faculty and staff, and we're so glad to have her with us. And so I'm going to let the students now introduce themselves and tell you the grades that they are in, and then they'll tell you a little bit about what they have done this year in their floral design program.
My name is Abby. I'm in the 10th grade.
My name is Braylon Bush and I'm a junior.
My name is Kayden Pippin. I'm in the 10th grade.
That's Desiree. Some of us are a little shy. That's Desiree and she is in the 10th grade.
My name is Mary and I'm a senior.
My name is Kayden and I'm a sophomore. January is School Board Appreciation Month. This time, this is a time to recognize the individuals who are close to volunteer work like a full-time job with extraordinary dedication to public schools. Their citizens who decisions affect us the students and build our community. The floral design class has presented each one of you with a gift that our classes have created.
We have had a busy and exciting year at floral design class. Our first project, we learned how to make homecoming mums and garbres. For our fundraiser, we have made over 50 mums, but we're bringing in a total of over $700 for Mod's Floral Design Club.
This year, we also made and delivered fresh flower arrangements for the teachers and staff on the campus, along with the senior citizens of the district for this Thanksgiving lunch. Besides making flower arrangements, we have also learned through artwork. This artwork includes arranging jewelry into expensive art, painting windows in the middle of the school office for the holidays, creating holiday decorations like mugs and ornaments, and learning how to draw with dimension and depth. The students were given a sketchbook at the beginning of the year, giving them space to learn and express themselves artistically.
Mod's Floral Design is grateful for the opportunities and support that the school board has given us, letting us grow and flourish as individuals and as a group. Without your support, our floral design club would not have the success it currently possesses. Therefore, everyone in Mod's Floral Design, thank you.
So our Organization of the Month, and they want to thank our school board for their support of our floral design program.
Award, if anybody wants to hit them later, our jewelry art and mugs and clay art.
You can see some samples of their work right back here if you would like to before you leave this evening. Our final Organization of the Month, and we're kind of highlighting two CTE programs because, as I said just a second ago, you can see the wonderful work that our floral design class put in to make this event and every event beautiful and nice. There's always people behind the scenes though, and this next organization, they're always behind the scenes, but you see their work in their delicious food. So I want to highlight Miss Neal and her two young ladies that came over with our family consumer science classes. And so I'm going to let these two ladies, which I know Mary has already introduced herself, but we'll introduce, we'll let Amy introduce herself.
My name is Amy and I'm a senior.
So Amy and Mary and Miss Neal, they came over and presented our board with the delicious meal tonight. But they do so much for our district. When we have our seniors for Cardinals luncheon, it is this group that provides the lunch. And I'm telling you, we're doing a Biggest Loser challenge right now. The secondary doesn't ever win because Miss Neal keeps us well-fed. And you walk into our hallways of the high school, it always smells wonderful. They, like I said, they're always behind the scenes, but their work that they do is just unmatched. They are so talented. Miss Neal, she has a bakery and you can see it because she makes cookies and brownies and all kinds of delicious treats for us, for our students. And so we're very blessed to have Miss Neal and her wonderful students that will come out and help us to thank our board members, but also our behind-the-scenes every day doing things for our community and our school. So I wanted to highlight Miss Neal and her program and thank them for all their hard work that they do for us. Our secondary Staff Member of the Month is Miss Amanda Lamb. When selecting a Staff Member of the Month, it is not, not difficult when you have great teachers like Miss Lamb. When you want to see an exemplar of a teacher, you look right at her. We have a couple of new teachers and one day I asked, I said, "Who would you like to go see? Who do you think you would learn from the most?" And immediately one of our teachers said, "Miss Lamb." And Miss Lamb didn't even know and we showed up in her classroom, and that's just how she does, day in and day out. She does such a wonderful job. She heads up our biology and science program there, and she is every day working with our students to help prepare them for their next science class, for their STAR test, for ACT, for going into the workforce, college, whatever their future goals and plans may be. She helps to prepare them for that, and every day they know. She is very consistent, exactly what is expected of them, and our students soar because of teachers like Miss Lamb. So I wanted to highlight her and let her know how much we appreciate her and how much I appreciate her. And she also heads up our junior prom, which if you have ever know anything about that, that's a task in and of itself. So she is very wonderful and we appreciate her very much at the secondary. And as I said, I will step back up in a minute if we have time when our two girls finish with basketball, but we do have one very special award that we received yesterday that the prom deal is going to come up and present for us this afternoon.
Well, much like we had with football back in December, we have one student who was selected to the Texas Girls Coaches Association Academic All-State Team. And what that is, is it's awarded only to senior volleyball players, managers, people who are part of the team in some form or fashion. And in order to be selected, you have to have at least a 94-grade point average. And of course, for us, we do ours a little bit differently, so we have to convert and do all these things, but we had one senior that was selected for that team because of her high academic achievement and GPA. It's a very, very big deal. This is a statewide accomplishment for her, and that is Miss Mackenzie Bishop.
That concludes almost all the presentations and ceremonies tonight. Everyone that was honored tonight, we come out in front of the crest, we'll get your picture and we'll publish that. Parents, family, y'all are welcome to come back and join us if you'd like, but do not feel obligated. You can read and go if you would like. Thank y'all so much. Yes, sir. Just to board up, we want to say this is Board Recognition Month and you heard Miss Brown talking a little bit about hers. So Miss Harold High School, things are the gifts from Miss Brown up front. Miss Seegers, elementary?
The thank you tape, all the kids signed, each grade double signed a letter, and then we did the M and M boxes.
Are they supposed to take a letter with them when they leave tonight?
Absolutely, it's a great haul. All their signatures.
So thank you so much, and the board, you know, I do want to say thank you so much because y'all do a lot of work. It is unseen and behind the scenes and it takes a lot of your time. There's a lot more exciting things to be doing, but the work that you do is instrumental in making sure the kids of law have a quality education, so I just want to say thank you. Next item is conduct a public hearing on the district's taper Texas Academic Performance Report. Miss Sanders is going to come up and give us a taper report.
I'm going to do this very quickly because y'all have already seen our scores and I love it. It's going to be very much information you've not already seen, so I will be short and straight.
What's favorite part of the year?
You have to, you know.
A little what?
The clicker.
I can make it? No, I don't ever work.
Okay. It should be a little white one, I think, but I don't know. All right, so for our STAR scores, I've got up here what our scores were, the region scores and the state scores. So you can see for each subject in each grade, how we did in relation to our region and the state. So that was third grade. Fourth grade, we're right there in reading, we were lower in math from the fourth grade. I mean, in the state. Fifth grade, we were way above in reading, way above in math, and we were way above in science. So the fifth grade really did, did well. Sixth grade, we did really well in the reading, above in the math, we were still above the region and the state. Seventh grade, we had eight in the eighties, in the seventies. If you look at the math, this was one of our really big hot spots, I think. We had 89 percent where the region was at 60 and the state was at 56. So that was a really big jump for what, so our seventh grade math really did well last year. For eighth grade, our reading was at 96, social studies 81. If you'll remember, this was an area that we talked about last year where we really struggled in social studies. Our scores were not where we wanted to be, so we spent a lot of last year, a lot trying to get that score up, and I think they really did, did well last year. Science, we were at 88, and the math, we were at 92. So our eighth grade really did well also. For our high school, English one, we were at 81, English two, we were at 96, algebra, we were at 90, and biology, we were at 94. So again, way above what the region and the state were at. And then our US history, we had everybody that passed. So, and you can see that's a thing that everybody in the state does really well on that test. So the chance we did have everybody that did pass. Our attendance, it's a little bit further behind the data that they report on that, but for last year, we were at 95.5, and the year before, we were at 95.2. So pretty much every year, we're about the same attendance. For the graduation rate of 2022, again, it's a little bit behind. We did have everybody that graduated. Our ACT, you can see the, our students tested, we were at 88 percent of our students tested, whereas the region is 61 and the state is 79. And I think our average score is lower than the region or the state, but I think that also has a lot to do because we have a lot more kids that take the test. We let anybody that wants to take it, take it, and there's some that we know they're not going to have a good ACT score, but we're not going to tell them no. And so I do think if, you know, we didn't have as many take it, that our average score would be higher, but we do allow anybody that wants to take it, we give it to them. So, and this is just a breakdown of the number of students that we had in our classes last year. You see the small classes opposed to the larger classes. Our ninth grade class, which is our 10th grade class this year, is our largest class. We've got 52 kids. It seems like any time somebody moves in, they move into our 10th grade class. So that's a really big class. This is a breakdown of our staff. We have 40 teachers, shows our professional staff, central administration, our aides, just how many staff that we have that work here. This is our breakdown of our teachers by years of experience. So 5.9 that were beginning-year teacher, and then, but if you look at our 21 to 30-years, 7.8. We have, you know, quite a bit of people that are, that have been here a long time. Some of us are getting old, been here a long time. And then every year, we did have to report if we've had any violent or criminal incidences, and we did not have any for class this year. So, does anybody have any questions on that? I think our STAR scores were, for the most part, they really did well last year. So we've really spent a lot of time focusing on our math this year in our area that was low, and so hopefully we'll see an improvement in that this next year.
Thank you. Thank you, Miss Sanders. Next, we'll, item six, we'll conduct public hearing to discuss Mod's IST's rating on the state's financial accountability system.
to discuss Maw's ISD's rating on the state's financial accountability system.
I laid a copy of this at your place. It's printed front and back of each page. Normally, when I present one of these, I'm pretty high on it. Now, I'm not quite so high. Only one that we got back for last year. You'll see on the first page, our rating is C, meet standard achievement. Our ceiling score is 79. We have a 79 score. This looks about like my high school report card. But if you'll look on the back of the first page, item number 17, this is what deemed us. Those of you who were here last year at this time, will remember our audit had a material weakness in internal control noted. So once you, once you have that, then you can score no higher than 79 on this, on this first report. It explains that really on page four of the report, which is the back of the second page that you have, where it says indicator 17. If you have a material weakness and you have a response other than no, then it sets the ceiling at 79. You can't score, you can score lower than 79, but you can't score any higher. So with that item hanging over our heads from last year, then we scored as high as we could possibly score with it out there. The last page that's in here are disclosures that are required by the, by the first rating. And it basically just says that we do have a superintendent contract on the internet. It discloses the expenditures for the superintendent and for board members. And then on the page behind it, it discloses any gifts, which were none. It discloses business transactions between the school district and the board members. The one disclosure that we have there is with Valley Tractor. Did I get it right? Valley Tractor? You have River Valley. River Valley. Thank you, River Valley. And so that's the amount that we have paid to them. We didn't actually pay that to Tim, but we paid it to River Valley Tractor. And so we're required to disclose it. Also, this year, I think we're going to have done a lot better. But I'll wait and let our auditor discuss that with you. I'll not present the audit to you. But I will say this, the bound audit report that you have, if you look at page 74 in that audit, that tells you what our first indicators are really for this year. And so those are the indicators that will show up next year. And I'm stealing a little bit of her thunder. She can address that when she presents the audit. But those are the indicators that we're taking that we're going to have a little bit higher ceiling than 79 when it comes back next year. Any, any questions?
Couldn't say the last page.
Call the last page. Well, I just looked in the index and wrote down the page number. Maybe next year, they'll put a page after that. No, maybe next year, they'll put fewer pages in there. That's what we're looking for, is fewer pages. Okay.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Next item's agenda is public comments. Haven't anyone signed up? Next item is communications. With communications, next item is consent agenda. The other minutes of the December 19th, 2024, regular meeting the board, the monthly financial report, and River Valley Tractor. Do y'all have, any board member have any item they want to pull or discuss? Do y'all have a motion to approve items A and B of the consent agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Terry. We have a second?
Second.
Taken by RJ. On favor, raise your right hand. Next item is item C, River Valley Tractor. Do we have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
Motion? We have a second?
Second.
Second? All in favor? Next, with one extension, Tim, on the River Valley Tractor. Item 10, consider to take action to commit and designate August 23, 24 fund balance.
No action.
There's no action to take?
We needed that to be on the agenda in case we were going to commit more fund balance, but we don't need to take any action on that. And again, our auditor will talk a little bit more about fund balance.
And without further ado, item 11, hear and accept the 23, 24 audit report.
Yeah, I was thrilled that the first rating was presented before I get to talk. I was like, thanks. So I get real awkward. But yeah, so last year, you know, we had a problem with the bank reconciliations. And so we do, you know, that did cause, you know, some issues with your first rating. This year, we're not going to have that. And so, you know, we're still working through some of the things on the bank rec. But I've met with Dr. Siggers and Tommy and we discussed these things. And so anyway, there's nothing, you know, that shouldn't be an issue this year. But, you know, we're hired to do an audit. And that's what, we try to be independent and objective. And, you know, it's not fun issuing audit findings. It's not fun. It's not fun telling y'all these things. But I feel like, you know, we do our best to be independent and to, if we feel like there needs to be something, you know, made to come to y'all's awareness, then we do it. And so it just is what it is. But so this, so like I said, y'all hire us to do an audit every year. So we come in and we look at the financial statements. We look at source documentation and we issue an audit opinion. And so this blue bound copy is your actual audit report. And then we do a side letter where if there's anything else we want to discuss with management, we put it in there. So I'm going to go over the high points of this audit report. If at any time, y'all need more information, just stop me and I'll answer your questions. All right. So if you go to page two, so this is the audit opinion letter. So like I said, we come in, we look at the financial statements and we form an opinion on the financial statements. And that's what this letter discusses. At the top, you'll see the word unmodified opinion. That is good. That is as good as it gets on an audit opinion letter. The top two paragraphs say that we've come in, we've audited the financial statements of Maw ISD as of 8/31/2024. And the second paragraph says, it is our opinion that they are materially correct. So like I said, that's as good as it gets on an opinion letter. All right. And that's one of the indicators on your first rating is they want to make sure that you have an unmodified opinion. All right. So go to page 15. So we do an audit on the financial statements. So in this book is your financial statements. This first one that I'm going to talk about is your balance sheet. So you can see that your balance sheet is broken down into funds. And so I'm only going to talk about the general fund, which is that first column. And this is as of 8/31/2024. So you have total assets of $6,761,000. You, the majority of that is cash, you can see at the top. If you go down, you had total liabilities in the general fund of $559,000. So when you have assets and you take away everything that you owe, that leaves you with fund balance. So that's what that section is at the bottom. That's what everybody wants to talk about. So, you know, there's different ways or different things that you can do with fund balance. You can commit fund balance, which is board action. You know, the board says, hey, we know we've got this fund balance. This is what we're going to do with it. Or we can assign fund balance, which is basically the superintendent and business manager get together and they say, okay, we're just kind of designating these funds for certain things. So at 8/31/2024, you had, and committed for retirement of loans or notes payable, $844,000. So that's the balance of your notes payable, not your bond, but just your notes payable. And that's what we've done every year. Like I said, if y'all want to change that, we can have board action and change that. But it kind of shows the public that you have a plan with your fund balance. And so we did the same thing this year, left the $844,000. And then on assigned fund balance, you have $1,200,000 assigned for construction. And then other assigned fund balance, $2,175,000. So then you have unassigned, which is basically what's left over for just general operations of the district. And you can see at 8/31, that number is $1,895,000. Last year, this number was $1,569,000. So we went up just in that category, $326,000. All right. So do y'all have any questions on that statement? Okay. So if you'll go to page 18, this is your income statement. And it's broken down again into the same funds as the balance sheet. And this is as of 8/31/2024. For the general fund, you have total revenues of $7,156,000. And then down, you go towards the bottom, you have total expenditures for the general fund, $6,917,000. And then that third line from the bottom, your net change in fund balance for the general fund was $226,000. So that was your total increase in fund balance. And I was telling Dr. Siggers and Tommy, that is good. So ESRS gone. So, you know, when we had all those ESRS funds, we were paying for some of our costs over in those other funds and we weren't having to pay for it out of, out of our general fund. Now, all that's gone. And so you can see that you still had an increase in fund balance without those funds. A lot of schools that we have looked at this year, they do not. I mean, we have a lot of schools that are deficit. And so that is good. That is good for us to have an increase, especially this year. So I'm going to say, on your income, last year, I always like to mention the prior year income or income and expense. Last year, our total revenue was $6,970,000, or $6,975,000. And then on our expenses last year, it was $5,933,000. So both went up. One thing that TEA does on your first rating is they take that, your total expenses, the $6,917,000, and they divide it by 365 days, find out, okay, how much does it cost Maw to operate on a daily basis? So this number for y'all is $18,900 a day. Okay? They take that number and they divide it into the unassigned fund balance to say, if revenue quit for Maw ISD, how long could they operate? And TEA wants it at 75 days and we have 100. And so that, and that is a very good indicator of a healthy fund balance. And like I said, we can, you can always change. You know, if those costs go up, you can always change your designations in your fund balance. But, I mean, I think with 100 days, that, that is sufficient. All right. So if you go to page 50, we get to skip a lot of pages and everybody's happy about that. So after the financial statements is the pages that you skipped. That's the notes to your financial statements. So these financials have numbers on them. The notes have details of those numbers. So there's a lot of information in the notes to the financial statements that we're required to report that you can look at, you know, in your own time. You can ask questions if you need to. I can explain them, but I know y'all don't want to hear it. Okay. So the general fund, we do, on page 50, we do a budget to actual comparison that shows you the budget that was adopted at the beginning of the year, any amendments that were made, and then we compare it to your actual. So you can, this is a really good thing to look at for the board because you can really see where you ended up at the end of the year. On total revenues, we anticipated that we were going to receive $7,125,000 and we received $7,156,000. On total expenditures, we thought we were going to spend $7,168,000 by the end of the year and we spent $6,917,000. So both of those are good. You know, one thing I was telling Tommy, it is very impressive that we can get that revenue as close as we did here. State revenue or state funding is so hard to calculate and to understand, like, what are we actually going to get? So for us to get within $30,000, $31,000 from what we actually received is very impressive. And it really gives y'all a, you know the number that you can spend. You know, if your revenue number is not good and you're $800,000 off, well, you could have spent that on kids, you know? And so I just feel like this was really good. And I don't normally say that, but it was impressive for me to see how close we were on our budget. But it just shows he did a great job on anticipating the revenue and understanding that, those calculations. And I appreciate that. All right. So now.
Omar could have got that close.
Did what?
I don't know if Omar could have got that close.
Oh, I mean, I don't. I couldn't have got that close. I was like, whoa. I mean, most times, it's, it's way off, which is not good.
Omar's the one that writes it for the state.
Yeah. It's a, the calculation is unbelievable. It is. Okay. So, you know, I mentioned, if we go to page, I didn't mark this page. Go to page 69. All right. So, you know, TEA and the feds, y'all, the school district gets money from those entities. So they say, okay, the first letter that we, that I talked about earlier was just a regular audit. And that's, you know, it explains that. This letter is, is explaining that since y'all receive state funding and federal funding, they require this audit to be in accordance with government audit standards. So that means we're looking at more. We're looking at internal controls. We're looking at budget, state compliance. We're looking at a lot more than a standard audit. And that's what this, this report talks about. If you go down, so one thing we look at is internal controls. And so we dig through everything and we make sure that, hey, if we think this needs to be different to protect the district, we will tell them. And they are very good at, you know, accepting what we, you know, want or how to make y'all's controls stronger. This year, so last year, we had a material weakness related to the bank reconciliation. We do have a significant deficiency this year related to the bank reconciliation. We had, but that, that does not affect your first rating. So basically, we had some issues on the bank reconciliation and it was a lot better this year, a lot better. But it was still something that we, we needed, I had to put it in there. And so I do, I've met with Dr. Siggers and Tommy and we've discussed like a plan of action and how we're going to make sure this is okay. A lot of it is related to software and complex transactions that weren't treated exactly the way they should have been. But that explains that. And, you know, the reason why this is in here is because we are required to do this audit in accordance with these standards. And so it's basically saying that, and I can explain it on, you can see the finding on page 71. So material weakness is the high one. That's the one where we're like, oh, Lord, if, you know, this, this could cause a big problem. Significant deficiency is basically enough to where I need to bring it to your attention, but it's not something that we think is a material issue. And so that's why it doesn't affect your, your first rating. But you can see at the top of that, it says, bank reconciliation, significant deficiency in internal control. Says during our audit of financial statements for 8/31/2024, we observed that while the bank reconciliations are generally accurate most months, instances involving complex or unusual transactions have resulted in errors. And so that, you know, was big enough and I had to do my job. And so I, I have, you know, we have to disclose that. But it was so, I hated to even do it because it was so much better this year. But it's something that we couldn't get out of and it just is what it is. Y'all have questions on that?
Is something that's easily rectified?
Yes. And I, I mean, I, which Kelly Birdwell is the other partner and we both sat down and looked at it. And, you know, we didn't, we understood what was going on. And so that's why we just felt like there was just a lack of control. There was some transactions that were just weird at your end. And so the way they were treated was just, it, it, we had to do something about it because it was big enough that we had to do something about it. But, I mean, it, it was a lot better this year. And so I don't feel like, and hence, that's why we can justify the significant deficiency and not a material weakness. I mean, we have to justify that to people above us. And so if I thought it needed to be a material weakness, we would have done it as a material weakness. But we do not feel like that it was significant enough to, to warrant that. But I do feel like we have a plan. And I think we understand the details of what happened, which is what's important to me. I want to know what happened and, you know, how can we fix it? I don't ever want to drive it again. And so I do feel, I feel confident in that. And, and I've told them, I'm, we will help. We will look at bank and we, you know, we will do whatever we need to do to help make sure that things are, are the way that they need to be. But there's, there's just a lot to these finances and these bank recs. I mean, it seems simple. It seems really simple doing a bank rec, but it's not. And there, there can be just complicated transactions that cause issues.
How common is this?
On a bank rec? I mean, we have on, I mean, we have findings. We, and most of them, if, if there's an issue, it's a bank reconciliation, bank reconciliation issue. I mean, I don't have one this year, but I've had, I mean, probably four or five in the past five years. A lot of times, a lot of times, we, you know, we, we will justify it if we can, but. Um, but there was no way that we could justify getting out of this one. Um, but, I mean, I still think, we dug in enough to where I do feel confident. And like I said, me and Kelly both looked at it. Um, it was just a really complicated transaction. And then there, I mean, there were just, there were other things that led to that. If it was one issue, we wouldn't have a finding. Uh, but there were just some things on this bank rec that we're, we're just not getting. And so, um-
What's a complicated transaction?
Well, voided checks after year end, that was one issue. So like, you know, you write checks, so that, you know, you're writing checks and say it's before your bank reconciliation. Well, then say those checks are dated before year end and then you, at the, you know, nine, three, you void them. Well, then, it's like, it's, and we don't know exactly how that happened in Ascender. But basically, those checks on that bank rec were there one month as outstanding. And then on the next one, they were neither cleared nor outstanding. And so there's, it is, I mean, I don't understand that, but he's done some research with Ascender. We think we figured out the issue there. Um, we're having some problems with our scholarship cash, uh, that I don't, we're researching that or they're researching that right now. And so there, there were, and then last year, we had, you know, we had the issue last year. Um, I was under the impression that we were, the difference was smaller than it actually was. And I've discussed this with, with Tommy. And so there was, I just, I'm, I, it was enough to warrant a finding. I mean, there's a lot of detail in it, but it, it's not, it sounds simple, like it's just a bank rec. How does it not work? When you're doing it in software, it's, it is weird. I mean, it's, it's not like what you think. It's, it's not working like what QuickBooks does, which is what a lot of people are familiar with. Um, but, I mean, a lot of it, I do think is software. Um, I don't think, you know, money is missing. I do not think that if I did, we wouldn't have a significant deficiency, we would have a material weakness. Um, and we would have other problems, y'all would know. Um, but, I mean, do you, what do you think, Tommy?
I don't think there's any money missing.
No, I mean, that's what I just said. I would tell them if I did.
I was agreeing with you.
Well, and, and just listening to-
There's just a lot to it.
Other superintendents and stuff, there's, there's some commonalities that we're seeing across the region with, with the software issue. Uh, there's just been a lot of people that has retired, that-
Yeah.
The old dogs that knew everything have retired and-
There's a lot.
We're training some new pups that are-
That's right.
That are not really, that have not had time in the ditches with the business app in what Tommy's sitting in, which is totally different from when you're sitting on Cloud Nine. We're supposed to work perfectly. And so there's just some pieces there. And so, um, you know, we feel like there's some software issues. Um, as, as Tommy learned something just a couple of weeks ago, one button clicked that-
We've got studies.
We've not clicked in the past, but by clicking that button, it-
We're holding a transaction.
One of those things that disappeared the year, the month before finally reappeared, which is, that's the hard part, you know, that, we use this SMS software 'cause it's designed to not lose something. That's the whole point of it. Everything is in one house so that there's not a, ooh, I forgot to bring this in. But we're having some training, well, outside training, but some user issues that's coming from software that's, I don't wanna look kink at it.
And you can't just process, and that's what I told him. You can't, I mean, it, it, when it's great and everything's working the way it is, it's fine to do that. But you have to think, when you're doing that bank rec, if you have a transaction that has not cleared in the prior month, in the current month, you should either see it clearing or it should still be outstanding. Like you've got, you still have to think. And I think a lot of times we assume that, okay, like this software is just gonna catch all our errors. No, it's not. If these settings aren't exactly the way that they're supposed to be, it won't. I mean, those transactions were not on the bank rec. And so, but then the next month, it cleared up. And so that's, you know, we were like, what in the world? And so I think it, and that's what I've told him, you're gonna have to learn these bank recs and understand. I don't know the settings of Ascender, I don't. But he's gonna have to know these transactions and if one does not clear, it should still be outstanding. And if it isn't, it, I mean, it's either cleared or outstanding. If it isn't, you got, we got, what happened to the transaction, where'd it go? And so it's that stuff that's weird. I mean, it, it sounds simple, but it, it is not. So I do, I do feel confident that it is some settings in the software. I do know that when, I think, I think I'm saying this right, when Pam was here, those, the Ascender Bank Reconciliation Module, I don't think she used the module. Like, it was more manual, you know, she was reconciling it manually. Well, I think in that transition, we started using basically half manual, half Ascender. And so we're not, we weren't seeing that these problems were there. Well, now, and I think it's smarter to do it in Ascender, I think manual is not. But you gotta still make sure it's right. You can't just trust that check, check, check. And so, um, huh, it's been fun.
The, the, the big thing is nothing's missing.
It is not missing.
Um, and that's, and that's, that, that's a, that's always a thing for, you know, Tommy and myself is to be able to prove to our, our board directors and our community that, hey, that everything that comes into the district is there and is being used on kids. That's number one, you know? And that's, that's the piece that we lose sleep over.
But I do, I mean, I'm, it just, it is what it is. I felt like we had to report it. Um, next year, I'm parading.
Leslie's coming back in a few months.
I, I don't know. No, I will come back in a few months. I told Kelly, I was like, maybe Kelly needs to come. I feel like I'm like bad luck or something because ever since I started doing it, it's, you know, we've had issues with the bank reconciliation. But I've had Kelly involved, but it's always good to have another person look at things. And so we may switch up and, and let her come and, um, but she has been involved, but, I mean, it hasn't been fun, it's not fun. Uh, but overall, that's what I was telling him, this is so, it's so, you know, takes precedence in all y'all's mind about what the audit is. But there was so much better this year. Those special revenue funds that are so hard to deal with, they were great this year. And there was just a lot that was just so much better and, and so I don't want to, I mean, yes, we have, we're, we gotta fix the bank recs, period, 'cause it affects a lot. But it was just so much better. And so I really tried to, and that's, that's one reason there's a significant deficiency is it was better. I mean, there was a lot better. I mean, the main issue was that darned bank rec. And so I wanna make sure that y'all know that and don't just take this, the negative and run with it. There was a lot of positive. Um, but it's still with an audit, I don't have a choice, I have to disclose it. And so, um, that's really, but I do, I mean, I am thankful it's, we're not gonna have a ding on your first rating next year. So that was, I am, there's, there's your good news.
A difficult question for you.
Oh, gosh.
With your background, if you were sitting in our seat, would this cause you concern?
For fraud?
Would this cause you concern?
Concern? I mean, we need to know how to do a bank rec. Uh, but like concern, it just depends on how you define that. And that's how, you put me on the spot.
Do we have a problem, do you see it being reconciled, like fixed by just-
Yeah, I, I hope, I hope, or I'm not gonna be happy. Uh, 'cause it's, I mean-
That's what she's saying, it did reconcile, it was just the next month.
Well, yes, and so, and then there's other issues too. But yes, the big one was that, the com, I mean, it's a complex transaction. We still had leftover issues from the prior year, uh, which if that was the only issue, we wouldn't have a finding. Um, but we had other issues. And so, I mean, it's concerning, we need to know how to do a bank reconciliation. And, um, yes, I think that's important. I think it's a very key control to a district. Uh, I mean, if you don't have a bank reconciliation right, we, there can be fraud. Do, uh, I dug through the financial statements enough and the source documentation, there, I feel confident that there's not fraud, I don't have concern for that. But I, I do know that if you have problems with a bank rec, you can have fraud. And so I think, you know, that is concerning. Uh, now, I don't think that your bank rec is just completely messed up, no. But there's some things in it that aren't working. And so it's concerning enough, but not fraud-related. I just feel like we, we gotta, we gotta be able to do a bank rec. I mean, it's, it's not as simple as that, but we, it doesn't matter, it has to be done because it protects, it is a huge internal control.
Okay, and things will be put in place to correct it?
Yes, oh, yes.
So, thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to accept the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four audit report?
I'd like a motion.
Motion, my Terry, I'm Seeger.
Seeger.
Thank you, my rest, y'all in favor? Please, yeah. Next. Information, I'll, principles, court, and athletic direction report.
Hey, Ms. Seegers? Our attendance has been really low in its infancy, um, looking at it compared to last year. We've had a lot of sickness. Right now, we are, this week, averaging forty to forty-seven kids out a day with the flu. I mean, we are having confirmed, like fifteen cases confirmed each day, kids going to the doctor. So, um, we have made sure that every night we are sanitizing with the oxidizing-
Cleaning agent.
Dust Buster pack, cleaning agent. Yes, we're having the rooms oxidized every night. Um, we have put wipes in, Clorox wipes in each of the classrooms. Dr. Seegers went last night to San Antonio and bought them out. They're just taking precautions there and then just, um, Nurse Karen's been working with the kiddos. You know, how do we cough, where do we cough, in our arms? And every time a kid coughs, teachers are, they've got that hand sanitizer out, just trying to make sure, be very preventative as much as we can. But it is just going through families, it's going, starts in one and it just keeps going. But other than that, our kids, the ones that are well, are coming to school and they're happy and they're, we're glad they're there. We'd like to thank you guys for all the hard work that you do. We are very, very appreciative of the time that you give as a board and for the way you support our kids and make sure that we are taken care of. We really do appreciate that. Our early literacy and dyslexia testing, so we do in-class testing for kinder through second. And that shows us where our students have deficits and pin point, pin points where we need to be doing intervention for each child. And it also lets us know what students need to be tested starting in first grade for dyslexia. We, we did really good. Last year, I think they, I recall, numbers were eleven, twelve kiddos in first that they were having to test for dyslexia. Right now, we are down two. So we're being very specific, very looking at the data and making sure that it is possibly a true dyslexia and not a special ed testing. So, um, like I said, we are through with that. We will be doing our benchmark testing next month. And so with that, we'll have data to start making our groups for small, readjusting our groups for intervention pieces. Starting in February, the first week, we're going to start our after-school tutorials for students who are struggling or who possibly may need just a little extra help in certain skill areas. Notes have gone home to parents, we've got the buses set up, gotta go shopping for snacks this weekend. But other than that, um, I think the kids, we're, we're just doing all that we can right now to get them where they need to be. Our positive office referrals are up, the teachers are really, um, voting on our kids every month. It's just, and I call them whenever they get a positive office referral, I ask them, who do you wanna, who do you want me to call, who do you wanna talk to and tell about this? And so they get, they pick a parent and we call and we just really make a big deal of it. On the last page, you can see our upcoming events. Tomorrow's our one-hundredth day of school, those kids are really excited. I can't wait to see, um, all their shirts and their dressups. They're supposed to dress up like a one-hundred-year-old person. So we'll see how many walkers and wheelchairs we have rolling down the hallways. Yeah, the hundred days has passed so fast, if you can't believe it's here. We have a lockdown drill scheduled on the twenty-ninth of this month. We will be rewarding our U I L participants on the thirty-first with a movie in New Boston. They're gonna go see Minions Four, just the Golden Knee. Yeah, we're excited, they're excited. And then in February, on the tenth, we will have our third and fourth grade reading benchmark and our fifth grade science. The twelfth will do the fourth math, fifth grade R L A. The thirteenth, we're gonna do third math and the fifth grade math. And then on the fourteenth, we'll have our Valentine parties. And that will also be the last day of our fourth six weeks. And then winter break begins. Oh, it's just flying, this year is really flying. Yeah, graduation's right on the corner. Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, you'll see there on the first page, I have a comparison with last year, um, with our enrollment and our percentages. And, um, you can turn there to the second page and you can see kind of throughout the year what our percentages have done. And you see there in January, we are in all red except, this shocked me, the seniors. Their attendance has gone up, you don't ever see that, but the seniors are here. Uh, so that's great. We'll take that positive because as you can see, the rest of us, uh, it hasn't been a great couple of weeks since coming back from Christmas break, as Ms. Seegers said. We, we have been hit hard with the flu on the secondary side. This morning, I asked Ms. Brandy for a number, we had twenty-one out. Uh, Nurse Nisi and I met, over ten of those are confirmed flu. Um, and we sent more home today. So Nurse Nisi and I met, Dr. Seegers, as Ms. Seegers said, brought up some Clorox wipes and we talked about, well, how can we be proactive and try to get ahead of this to at least slow it down? Because she said, this is the worst that she has seen for it to go multiple weeks. Usually we have a big bout of it and then we kind of, you know, have a break, like Martin Luther King, and we can come back and kind of get going again. But she said for multiple weeks, this has been one of the worst years she's seen. So, uh, something we started today is trying to encourage our students again to use the hand sanitizer when they go in and out of the classrooms. Um, also, multiple times throughout the day, I went in and I cleaned off all of the door handles and the high surface areas that our kids touch, uh, the doors going in and out of our buildings. Um, we also got the spray gun out again at lunch, um, and it's being done in the evening. So that way hopefully we come back to clean surfaces. Ms. Kathy's aware, she's taking care of our high school buildings. So we're trying to get ahead of this and hopefully slow it down, um, see if we can't get our numbers going back in the right direction. So that's why you see a decline there. Um, if you'll notice there at our secondary news, we hosted our financial aid night here on campus. We had recruiters from Texaco County College come out and we helped several of our seniors. We had ten seniors come out and over half of them were able to fully complete that process. And as you know, that's a requirement now for graduation. Students either have to have a FASFA completely filled, um, and, and, or they have to have an opt-out form. And so we try to work with them to get that FASFA completed, um, before we offer the opt-out because that way just opens any doors and leaves the door open if they decide later on they wanna go to college or trade school or whatever they, they decide. So we, we work with them very closely. We're gonna have another night that we have, um, and they're gonna come out again in the day. So we're gonna continue to work with our seniors and their parents and guardians to get that completed. This past weekend, we had five of our band students participate in the Four States Honor Band. Um, you can see there the students, we had Brayden, Gavin, William, Kennedy, and Desiree in the chairs that they received. I was, I had the privilege to go and watch that, that was an amazing concert. Uh, some really talented students in this area and our students did a fantastic job. And so very proud of them, Mr. Fan and Ms. Martinez for working with those students and getting them prepared. Today, we hosted our third, uh, blood drive of the year. We met and exceeded our goal by one unit. We met and exceeded our goal by one unit. We received fourteen, fifteen units, excuse me. So hard work by our students, our faculty and staff and even had a couple of community members come up. So we've got one more of the blood drives coming up this year and as you know, that always helps our seniors because we do get a scholarship from those blood drives. So we really try to push that and also to help those in our community if it's ever needed. Dual credit kicked off Monday. We started it here Tuesday. We have, I'm very excited about these numbers. We have fifty-four students enrolled and that's not including the ones that are already in extended courses. These are for new classes, you know, our, our biology and our welding, they're extended classes. So we have more than this that are enrolled, but we have new classes for new students. We have fifty-four students in taking eighty-four courses. So that's super exciting for our students and the opportunities that they have. We have, you know, one senior you saw earlier, Mackenzie, who's working towards completing her associate degree by the time she graduates. And we actually have a sophomore that has started that process as well. So we see some great things with our dual credit program. Our science program, Coach Bishop's class won a highlight. They dissected a sheep's brain and Mr. Tom Merlin's eighth graders, they dissected a shark this week. So some great things out of our science classes. Our seventh graders got to go in and observe the dissection and answer some questions. So kind of getting our younger students exposed to that. Our ag guys, if you guys looked at our social media, they went to Fort Worth and had a great showing out there, so we're very proud of them and all the projects that they completed and everything. And a special thank you to Mr. Rusty for taking that late night drive, getting those basketball boys out there, so, but a great showing out there. We also had Brock Wyndham sign his letter of intent to continue his baseball career at the next level at National Park. So that was a very good thing that we hosted week before last. We had Ms. Trinity Gardner, she came out on campus as well to meet with all sixth through 12th graders, talk to them. This is her second visit with our students to talk about healthy relationships. Reese, Adriana in Brooklyn, they completed, they competed in our FCA liftoff meet and super excited. Reese, he brought home first place in the 198 class, so kind of sold Coach Turner's, Coach Turner's thunder, but I knew he wasn't going to be here, so took that one for myself. Navy recruiter, we had our Navy recruiter on campus to visit with our students, come out and do a lunch presentation with our high school students on the 13th. Today, I got to watch something really neat. Nurse Nisi's classes, our health science classes, they are learning and they're going to do checkoff tomorrow on infant CPR and, and infant choking. So that was really, really neat to watch our kids and watch Nurse Nisi work with those students in that health science class. So great things going on there. We also, after our break, we started our cards tickets and this is our reward system in our middle school for positive behavior. You can see there, our C stands for caring, A for being attentive, R for responsible, D for determined and S for studious. We wanted to bring in a lot of characteristics because we told our students, this isn't about being the, the smartest student or the, the one who excels academically, this is just about being a good person. And so each teacher has a stack of cards, tickets. When they see a student going above and beyond in one of these areas, they write the student's name on it, they sign it and they give it to the student. The student can bring it up. Ms. Brandy, we have a box outside of her office and each Friday, I draw one sixth grade or one seventh grade, one eighth grade, and they can come up and get a piece of candy and a drink of their choice. So students have really enjoyed that. It's really helping a lot with our behavior there in our middle school. You can see our upcoming events, like Ms. Seagars said, we'll celebrate the 100th day of school tomorrow. It is crazy to believe that we've already gone through 100 days, so celebrate that tomorrow. We also tomorrow have a really exciting, our, our middle schoolers, we're going to the New Boston Movie Theater and we're going to see Despicable Me Four and our kids are super excited about that. All of those have participated in UIL back in December. And then we have some of our upcoming benchmarks, you can see there, we're going to start with English Language Arts on the 29th and then we have our first powerlifting meet here at Maude on the 30th. And then we'll finish up with social studies and science benchmarks before we go to winter break. We get back, we will have our math benchmark and then we'll finish up there with some fun things at the end of this month before we go to winter break. So that's your kind of some of the things, the highlights that we have going on around the secondary campus. As you guys know, the spring, it's going to be super busy. Our kids are going in a hundred different directions. So we started as soon as we got back from Christmas break, we had PLC meetings and we started our intense tutoring with our small group instruction. So we had that taking place during our tutorial times for our middle school and our high school students to help to get those students prepared for their upcoming STAR tests and also get ahead. We didn't want to wait on benchmark results. We wanted to use our interim tests and what we've been seeing through our unit tests throughout the year. So we have started that to help meet our students' needs and to, to get them where we, we need them to be coming up in this spring. So again, thank you all so much. School Board appreciates you much. We appreciate your support of our students at the secondary campus, so thank you very much. You guys have any questions? So the heart-to-heart celebration, that is kind of our time to get together and it's at our, our inclusion Valentine party. We do it during tutorials for middle school and tutorials for high school. We go all the time, we have, all of our organizations are going to be involved. Our FCA, or excuse me, FCS, they're going to cook, they're going to have cookies and brownies and cake pops. Ms. Brown's floral design, they're going to have a flower making station. Our yearbook's going to have a picture taking station. So all of our organizations get together and our students just come out and enjoy and just get to celebrate kind of, you know, Valentine's Day and being together. So yeah, a fun event. They're excited, so thank you.
I was going to say, Coach Turner gave me the athletic director report out of nowhere, the one I had. But I was just going to say, it's, it's there in front of me, board. We're moving into basketball. Got some, got some wins underway. Got powerlifting starting, golf, softball, baseball. So I'll let you take that and read that one at your, at your leisure and feel free to ask any questions you may have on that one.
So Alfred's running the powerlifting meet?
Yeah, I think so.
You know what?
Next item on the agenda is to order the school board election for May 3rd, 2025.
Yes, sir. So it's time again for, for board election. We have three positions up this year. Position one, that's currently held by Terry Johnson. Position two, currently held by Tim Roberts. Tim, remember, took the leftover term from Aaron last year, so that's why he's coming back again this year. And position three is currently held by Rusty Bailey. So Ms. Holly's got board packets in her office, or board member packets in her office if you haven't picked up or you're choosing to plant right again. But we do just need to order the general election on May 3rd for positions one, two, three, and they're three-year full terms.
Any discussion or questions? Please send a motion to order this school board election for position one, two, three on May 3rd.
Correct.
Y'all heard that? Do we have a motion?
Not like a motion.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Consider and take action to approve an MOU with Oak Ridge Missionary Baptist Church to service an evacuation sheltering site and reunification center.
Okay, work, as you know, we've been working quite a bit on the school safety side of things and one of the pieces that we need is a solidified place in the event that we have to evacuate the school. Of course, we always think worst-case scenario, active shooter or something like that, but it could be anything from train derailment, tornado or just general electrical failure here at the campus and we can't function and it's not safe for kids. And so any of those things could be, could happen. So I was able to visit with Stephen Gaines, Oak Ridge Missionary Baptist Church, as you know, is off of 2624 down there at the very end of it. Well removed from anything that's on highway eight and they've got a really nice facility that can handle our size student body and staff body. And so Chief and I went down there, viewed it, looked at it, the whole, you know, is it possible or would it work for us? And we think it would be a remarkable place in the event we ever had to do it. This is one of those that we, we want it, but we want to never have to use it. And so, so the church has already voted to accept the conditions of the MOU. The basic pieces of it is there's, there's no money that's going to change hands or anything like that. And then we're guaranteeing the church, if we ever have to inhabit the church to, to reunify, if anything's broken damage, we'll put it back in the condition it was prior to us taking control of it. And so that's, that's the, that's a stipulation in there and just solidifies all those pieces so that we're not saying, well, we thought we had a, we could go someplace, but we, we know where we're going or we have options to go to. Any questions on that one?
So do we have a motion to approve the MOU with Oak Ridge Missionary Baptist Church to service an evacuation and sheltering site and reunification center? Rusty, you have a second?
Second.
Josh, all in favor? Next item, consider and take action to approve an MOU with Lindon Kildare Consolidated ISD to service evacuation sheltering site and reunification center.
So it's just a ditto of the thing I just said?
Any questions or discussion? Do we have a motion to ditto what he just said, which would be to take action to approve MOU with LK? Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Next item, superintendent.
All right, board, I'm fixing to try to zoom in. Jason and Robert, right? You're going to make me talk? You're kidding me. Sir? Well, I know Robert's at Kennebelle, so he's already, he's doing another one. Well, hopefully he should be on there down tonight. Sir? Jason, Robert, you there? But I think I'm just texting them both again. But we, the construction documents, all those pieces were completed today, actually. We got the documents back from the lawyer for the front end of it. Architect was putting the final touches on it to send out for competitive bids. I do know we got four interested parties right now, that's prior to even hitting the wire, basically, lack of a better way of saying it. HWH out of Paris, TCMC out of Tyler, Altech out of Textur Cannon and Coke right out of Textur Cannon have all approached either the architects or myself at one point and said, hey, if it comes back open, we're interested in, we want to look at your project. And so that's, that's going on. Let's see if it says, do I need to admit anybody that say anything? Okay. I'll show anybody. Okay, but the, we're scheduled to have on the 30th of this month, question meeting. So anybody has questions that want to bid on it, they'll stream in from out of town, but we'll, we'll conduct it here at the office. We'll accept bids on the, I think it's the 20th of February, which is during winter break. We'll compile stuff on the, the day after that Friday, all in preparation for the board meeting in February. And so the intent is to select a contractor in the February board meeting and issue to go ahead the day after that. So that's, that's really where we are with that. We did quite a bit of work over the holidays with just different pieces of this, looking at, you know, concrete, HVAC, kitchen equipment, all those things there that, some of the things that, you know, Hunter shared the last time, there's things that need to be scaled back if we're going to try to get there. And so we didn't want to sit back and not address pieces there that needed to be looked at. And so we went out and had several meetings with Robert, Jason, Brooke and Perry. They redesigned, they relooked at their drawings. Concrete was a big one, HVAC, still kind of little, little bit in the air on that one. Stage equipment, all those pieces there, we've got us down to as simple as we can be for the stage. Pretty typical now, I think it's, you know, everything's touch button. I guess, well, I was talking to Tim a while ago, sounds like Tractors Two are same way now, but pretty, I just need a 40/20, you know what I'm saying? But, but you know, the stage is pretty, pretty basic as far as it goes, but that's, that's been a big piece of it as well. And then we did another piece with kitchen where I sent quite a bit of information back to Jason on our kitchen equipment, stuff that we do think could go into the new building and save us some substantial cash. And so, and that's pieces that I wanted on the front side that wasn't sitting in there kind of like a contingency, because I felt like if that was sitting as a contingency, it gives somebody the opportunity to inflate prices, knowing they can come back and take that in, you know what I'm saying? So we wanted it as lean as possible so that I felt like it was in the better interest of the district. So that piece is where we are there. But I think we're moving in the right direction and again, we're, we're planning on breaking ground end of April. Somewhere in there, seeing some fencing going up and getting ready to go. Any other questions on that one? Okay. Midwinter is Monday through Wednesday, so I'll be leaving Sunday and I'll be out of town till Wednesday night. If you need me, just give me a holler, I'll be able to talk through the phone and everything. Due to one of the district note that we did get a donation again this year from Mr. Greg Cooley and the amount of $1,000, so just wanted to let the board know that. It's already been put into the fund. I believe that's in the library fund, is that right, Tommy?
Library.
Library. And then do need to look at some board training pieces, but Ms. Holly went down with the flu on Wednesday and so her and I didn't get a chance to finalize everything, but you know, the plan is next month to have a couple of training pieces right before the board meeting. So I'll kind of draw your schedule back maybe 30 minutes earlier than normal. We'll have some pieces drawn in there to help with those board trainings in preparation for disclosure in April. And then right as we was getting ready to post, Tasby 124 came out. We'll have that in next, next, next month's agenda and so we'll, we'll look at that piece there. It's been a while coming and then I'm just going to tell you, it's going to be a huge one in the fall when it comes back because we had a legislative session this year. It's going to be a lot to swallow, not just a piece there. So other than that, I think that is it. For superintendent report.
All right. We'll be going into executive session at 8:09 PM to discuss personnel, court test government code, section 551.074, conduct the annual superintendent evaluation, discuss and consider employment contract with superintendent, resignation and retirement from employees and discussion of personnel, all the test of government, same test of governments code. We'll take a brief recess and convene anything. Thank you. We're turning back into open session at 10 o'clock. Next item on the agenda is consider and take action on employment contract with the superintendent. Do we have a motion to extend the contract one year with a 5% raise?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second? Second, all in favor? Item 20, having none, we can bypass. Item 21 adjourned, do we have a motion?
I'll make it.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second? Second, all in favor? Did you get those, Tommy?